I have the pleasure of introducing our moderator today. Her name is Michelle Williams Harrington. She is a delight. I've met her a couple times. She's the Vice President and Broker of Record for First Team Real Estate. She began her career in 1997 after her enlistment in the United States Marine Corps. Michelle has been an agent, an investor, and owner of a real estate, mortgage, and escrow company. She serves on the Board of Directors for the Orange County Association of Realtors and the California Association of Realtors, and is a federal political coordinator for the National Association of Realtors. Michelle graduated from Chapman University and is married to Dave Harrington, the Mayor of Elise Viejo, who I believe is in the back of the room or around here, right there. Together they have five children, and that's my pleasure to introduce Michelle Harrington.
Okay, so they gave me all these rules that we need to follow. Are you guys okay with following rules? I hope so, because otherwise I'd have to like put the smack down. Okay, so this is not a debate. This is a question and answer, and you are going to be directing your answers to the audience. If you exceed your designated response time, then we will take it out of your next response time or your final question. So make sure when the... Who's the timer? When the timer says you're done, you're done. Okay? Perfect. We want to make sure everybody has equal time. We will go in a random order that was picked out randomly. We also had a panel of questions. So our questions have been created by a panel of experts in the Huntington Beach City Council race. So these questions were not made up by me, so don't shoot me if you don't like them. Good? Okay. So before we do introductions, because we're going to do self-introductions, what we are going to do is we have three yes or no questions. And you have panels. Panels. See that yes or no? Okay, so I will ask the questions, and then simultaneously, without cheating and looking at the person next to you, you're going to say yes or no. Would you support allowing a regulated cannabis industry as a way to increase revenue? Short-term vacation rentals are currently not permitted in the city. Do you support creating taxes and regulations to allow them in the city? Short-term vacation rentals are currently not permitted in the city. Do you support creating taxes and regulation to allow them? Got it? Now the third question. Would you support a no-growth initiative requiring a vote for certain types of development? Would you support a no-growth initiative requiring a vote for certain types of development?
You can't detail the types of development?
That's not in the question.
Can you restate that question, please?
Would you support a no-growth initiative requiring a vote for certain types of development?
I'm thinking. Depends on what kind.
Yeah, it's pretty ambiguous.
Wherever it gets it.
So that would mean it can be distinguished later.
Okay, great. So now we come to our opening statements. And I'm going to call your name out in random order, and you're going to have how many minutes? Three minutes for your opening statement. Okay? We are going to start with Michael Simmons. Three minutes, Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael Simons.
Simons.
Some of you may know me as Dr. Simons. I've been a podiatrist in Huntington Beach since 1971, belonged to hospital staffs locally, started my leadership in the locals association, and that grew into a gubernatorial appointment to the Licensing Board in Sacramento. I served eight years on that, and have also been in leadership with different types of committees in medicine and in hospitals. The other, Michael Simons, is a trustee for the Huntington Beach Union High School District. I was initially appointed in 1991, and concurrently concurrent with what I'm...my work, I've been on the board for 27 years, have been elected seven times, really enjoy what I'm doing. I think we have a wonderful school district. I'd like maybe to see to be able to model some of the things we do, like shared decision-making and interest-based bargaining, which I don't think we see in the city. The district is one of the most fiscally stable and successful districts in Southern California. We have input from employees, certificated and classified alike, and we were just voted a number-three top workplace in Orange County, which is difficult for an institution like that. So why do I want to do this? Having lived here for 44 years, 45 years, I sense almost a tipping point going on in Huntington Beach regarding quality of life. Issues such as homelessness, high density, traffic congestion, sober living homes, short-term rentals, offshore drilling possibilities have led me to want to make sure that we try to maintain a quality of life that we've all moved here, and we all live here, and we all want to enjoy. Additionally, the fiscal stability of the city is of concern to me. With pension obligations looming in the future, I want to make sure that we're able to hire the best and brightest to be our police, fire, and other employees, and be able to compensate them adequately, and to be able to hire enough people to take care of the needs of the city. Additionally, from my own personal perspective, there's a lack of working together between the city and the schools, and I'd like to see us work together better. One of the reasons Irvine has such a high interest rate and people wanting to live there is how well the city and the schools work together. The City of Irvine donates to the school district every year. I think we can do better.
Thank you. Okay, for this opening statement, we're going to go right down the line, and our next speaker, this young gentleman, I can't see your name tag, so...
Well, that's great. All right. For those who don't know me, I'm Casey Fokler, and I've been a resident here in Huntington Beach for well over 30 years. I'm a father, a husband. I was a teacher here for almost 20 years at Talbot Middle School, where I had almost 17 years' worth of students come through. I was activities director there, surf coach for a number of years. I've been a surfer for 48 years here in the Huntington Beach area. I had a business background for almost 20 years, working for Baxter Healthcare Corporation, Marriott Corporation, and several other large Fortune 100 companies, and starting an internet company prior to going into education. And I'll never forget that interview when they said, "What are you doing taking an 80% pay cut?" And it's kind of the same thing with going into public service here. I saw at that point in time a crisis going on in our middle schools and our high schoolers with how history was taught. I'm a history teacher, history major, and I wanted to instill the love of citizenship and the love of country into my students, so I went into education. So just like Michael had said, he's seeing an erosion of some of the quality of life here in Huntington Beach. I think a lot of us have seen that, you know, recently. And my slogan is "Put the Town Back in Surf City." That's my slogan, and it's held up with three pillars. Those pillars are doing it through youth, through technology, and through safety. Again, as Michael said, we need to work together, the city and the schools, in order to show the kids what it means to be good citizens, so as they get older, as adults, they can go out into our community and become productive, active citizens, leading productive lives. And we can do that through internship programs. We can do that through many things, but it takes a joint effort, and it takes somebody to get out and do that. Now, recently retired, I have time to help put together some of these presentations so that the city leaders can go out and present to some of the high schools and middle schools. Technology, we have some great new companies coming in here, New Light Technology and some others. I mean, they have some wonderful ideas. We need to support those. We have SNL Creative, which is out there. We need to get our kids to know what these are, so they can see what kinds of jobs they can have in the future, and we can do that through some of the internships. And finally, and I'm glad that our fine officers are here today, we need to also take care of our police force. We need to give them the tools that are needed to go out and be able to fight crime even before it happens. Take some of the things that they have that are constricting them, and let them go out and do their job properly. And so if you vote for me, or you like me here, just look up Casey Fokler, putting the Town Back in Surf City.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for all coming out today. My name's Eric Peterson. I currently serve as your Mayor Pro Tem and have been serving the city for the last four years. On my last campaign, when I was running, I promised to take a look at development, see what we could do about it, because it was a little out of control, and I promised for transparency. Since I've been office, I did make changes or brought them to council, and they were adopted to our development plan, which included 30-foot setbacks, responsible parking, height limits, and that every project went through review. I thought that was very important, that we don't rubber-stamp projects coming through the city. With transparency, I brought back the Finance Board, which I was once on, and we did such a good job, they shut it down. So I brought that back. I thought it's always good that you have extra eyes on our books. And especially going into the next five years, we have some huge hurdles to overcome. With CalPERS, we have $25 million we have to come up with that we don't have right now. And I'm not one to increase taxes on the citizens. If all our property values are going up, all of us are paying more taxes than it is right now. Everything's more expensive. So to add a sales tax to try to get out of this situation, I believe is just a Band-Aid in the dyke, putting your finger in the dyke. It's eventually, it's kicking the can down the road. We've done that for too long. So in the next five years, we really need to have people on council that are willing to make the tough decisions, and we're going to have them. And the biggest thing is our city keeps inviting big events. We love them. They bring a lot of tax revenue in. It's great for our population, because we're not paying for it, right? We're getting the tax dollars, but in that, it puts a stress on our city employees, and to the point where I think in October, our police are working every single weekend. So we need to be able to find ways to make sure that staffing stays, if possible, increase it, but also get through this hump. So in the next four years, I'll do what I've been doing. I continue to listen to the population, continue to figure out what the citizens want, and be responsible with your tax dollars. I mean, that's really what we're here, to make the city run smoothly. And we've had some good council members that I've got to serve with that have the same philosophy, and I'm looking forward to if anyone doesn't get on, that one of these fine people will pick up the slack. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, good afternoon. Excuse me. My name is Don Kennedy, also known as DK. It's a moniker I've had for 40 years. My family arrived in Huntington Beach in 1962. Excuse me. I've been married to my beautiful wife for 24 years. We have three remarkable kids. I went through the school system here, Dwyer, Huntington Beach, Oilers, 1979. Got my oldest, graduated Huntington Beach, three-year captain of the ice hockey team, brought the first championship to Huntington Beach Ice Hockey. He's now at UC Santa Barbara, boy-girl twins that are sophomores at Huntington Beach High School as well. I'm a dog lover, family man, and have been a volunteer for decades, well over a decade, youth sports, soccer, hockey, and give my time to organizations like Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So I do like to give back where I can. We've always been involved as a family. My wife's always been involved in the schoolrooms, classrooms. So with that said, what I bring to Huntington Beach is a passion. My belief is complete and total engagement in the city's issues. I believe that there is room to improve with what's happening in our city. There's issues that we all want to address. I'm sure they're very common, the sober living. I personally plan to oppose high density where there's zoning change requirements. I bring decades of executive leadership. I've been involved in the largest land sales company in America, could be the world. I've sat at the top of extremely large organizational charts as the Executive Vice President, reporting to my mentor, who is the founder of Auction.com, the largest real estate marketplace in the world. And I've seen what it takes to build organizations through leadership. You have to build consensus. You have to essentially provide deliverable results. In the private sector, if you don't deliver results, you no longer are employed. So I bring that mindset of delivering successful, measurable results to the city, something I think needs improvement. So that's kind of, in a summary, what I bring to the table in that regard. I do believe that our staffing, when it comes to our public safety, does need some help. Our staffing's been flat for years. Our call counts are up dramatically with the police and fire, and they do an unbelievable job. As Mr. Peterson said, our police department is highly taxed from the standpoint of overtime, and I understand that there are fiscal responsibilities that need to be addressed, but there also has to be the number-one issue for our city to thrive as a worldwide destination, it has to be public safety. With that said, I'm also...let me see here. I think that's about all I need to say. If you'd like to learn more about me, you can go to KennedyForHB.com, and my tagline would be "New Leadership, Better Results." Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's my turn already. That was quick. I'd like to thank Diane and the Huntington Beach City Chamber of Conference for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself to the community, and also the opportunity to meet the candidates. I too, as DK, I went and graduated from Dwyer and from Huntington Beach High School in Moved here in Huntington Beach in 1977. I opened my first business when I was 23-years-old. It was a commercial screen printing company. I employed a lot of the high school students in the area. I raised my family here, and I also participate in some fundraisers with American Legion and the Las Thomas Women's Club in Sunset Beach, where they raise money for scholarships for young students. I was fortunate to grow up here in Huntington Beach, and I've seen what Huntington Beach was, and through the 40 years, I've seen what it has developed into, and a lot of it is great. Some of it, I believe, was shortsighted and didn't have the residents' best interests in mind. No one can deny that there are hurdles for Huntington Beach and challenges for it to meet in the future, but overall, I think this is a great community to live in, to be involved in, and to experience and raise your children in. Huntington Beach has always been trendsetting and innovative and diverse, and I think we can build upon that if we all can communicate and work together. And some of the things I like to see are, number one, there's challenges with traffic in Huntington Beach, and I think we can develop a smarter traffic system using radar technology. I think we can continue to work with Congress and try to develop legislation to limit the number and location of sober living homes, and also limit the building of high-density housing as well. Before it ends, one of my big pet projects I'd like to see is a ban on Styrofoam products being sold and handed out in Huntington Beach. Huntington Beach is, I believe, as well at a tipping point in the next four years, will can decide whether Huntington Beach goes down a path to be the next Long Beach or remains a small, vibrant, innovative, and trendsetting community. Thank you. I'm Darren Ellis. I hope I get your vote.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Kalmick. I've served as Jill Hardy's Planning Commissioner for the last six years. Prior to that, I was on the Mobile Home Advisory Board. I moved to Huntington Beach in 2005 when I purchased my home in northeast Huntington Beach. I grew up in Seal Beach. My father owned a business on Main Street, so I was next city over. I hold a degree in Electrical and Computer Engineering from Berkeley. I graduated in 2003, so I was only there for about three years. Started my first IT company, and I don't mean to make this competition, but when I was 11. And I've been running that basically ever since. I work now as an IT Management Consultant for small businesses and nonprofits in the LA and Orange County area. I've served as a volunteer firefighter for Orange County Fire Authority. I currently volunteer with the Huntington Beach Fire Department as a Senior Home Inspection Officer, helping install smoke and carbon monoxide detectors for at-risk seniors. I teach a computer class, volunteer at the Senior Center every other Thursday. I also serve as the Treasurer and former Vice President of the Bolsa Chica Land Trust, and I was on the Settlement Committee to acquire the last 11 acres of the Bolsa Chica that is still available for development. In that case, I've helped steward a million dollars, almost a million dollars, in donations to raise for the acquisition of that project. I also serve on the Board of Agglita Marine Research, which is a nonprofit education foundation in order to help educate on the issues of plastic, and they helped discover the big plastic patch out in the Pacific Ocean. As your Planning Commissioner, I've worked hard for the last six years to really, I would say, listen to residents and try to come up with the best solution. We generally have an issue on the Planning Commission where we don't make policy, and that's part of the reason that I've decided to run for council. We run up against an issue where if a project fits within the box, we can't make findings for denial. But those projects are too big at this point. Our residents have come and said, "Hey, we don't like these projects," so I'm running to make the development look like what residents want. My voting record's strong on this. Actually, we just made a correction to that voting record, which omitted my vote to lower development standards on Beach Boulevard, like Mr. Peterson spoke about earlier, except I had one slight caveat, is that there was another project that was a veterans' housing project coming through that was in the pipeline that I wanted to support, because I think that our veterans do need housing in our community. I've also voted against some high-density projects that have come through on Beach Boulevard, as well as alcohol permits in the downtown, as I think we have an oversaturation of alcohol in the downtown. So I'm very concerned about the local development, the local impacts of that. So we did amend the Beach Boulevard plan, but we didn't go far enough. You know, downtown-specific plan, some of the other specific plans in the city have high density in them, and our residents don't want that. So with the overarching goal of trying to limit Sacramento's influence on us, we're going to need to open up those plans and really sit down with residents, roll up our sleeves, and do that hard work. The other initiative I'm working towards is a smart city initiative, which is very similar to what Darren spoke about, involving fiber optic in the ground in order to move traffic around our city. Public safety is also extremely important. We're down on police officers, petty crimes up, violent crimes up, and we're going to need to augment our police force, and we're going to need to find fundamental ways to raise revenue in the city that don't involve raising taxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey there, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come out today and speak about my campaign. My name is Brian Burley. I actually began running two years ago for this officer. It's about 20 months now, give or take a few months. My passion in life is public service, and that's what drew me to get involved and run for the Huntington Beach City Council. What I quickly realized in the City of Huntington Beach is that the people were lacking a plan. And when I ran, I realized that I wanted to have a vision, a vision for the future of our city. People need a plan that they can rally behind, regardless of their political affiliation or where they stand on particular issues. People also need a plan where they can hold, you know, other elected officials accountable. So when I began running, I started formulating that plan, meeting with people in our community, hearing their input. It's something I'm really passionate about. I've lost track of how many people I've talked to. I get about three hours of sleep with about 150 Facebook messages every other day. The words really spread, but that vision led me to create HB2050, which is my platform. And it's the only platform in this election that's calling to replenish our police departments. It specifically states how we're going to replenish our police department to pre-recession numbers, how we're going to pay down unfunded liabilities, and it has a 30-year financial chart with financial budgets for every fiscal year to do that. It also does things such as calling for government reform, stricter term limits on our city council, two-term limits and you're done, as well as mayoral elections, so that it's not just used for political purposes and reelection purposes. As well as that, my platform touches on a number of other issues, such as the need for a rainy day fund, so, you know, when we have another recession, we're actually prepared for those type of things, as well as infrastructure increases. The main campaign issues of my campaign are that I'm going to fight high-density development and put an end to it. I've signed a pledge to put an end to it, as well as DK notified me he's done as well. Mine states specifically that I will not appoint a Planning Commissioner that will approve any high-density development projects. I'm also promoting a more secure long-term financial plan, which I just outlined a little bit to you, and if you have time, I would appreciate it, if you could read that platform. It's BrianBurley.com/HB2050. I'm also calling for an infrastructure increase. That's charted out in the platform as well. A little bit about myself, information technology analyst. It would be probably a pretty good idea in our government to have that kind of background. Only a third of our streetlights are even synchronized with City Hall, so you wonder why you're sitting at the light sometimes. Our police technology is also out of date. I speak to our police officers, and it takes them way too much time to report their findings. On top of that, I've also been a funding delegate at USC, so I understand the value of valuing your taxpayer money, and I will value every penny of that. On top of that, I've worked closely with elected officials. I know what they do wrong, what they do right, and I'll make sure to grow upon that. You know, it's been a great process running in such a great city with such great people. My campaign is for the people, for the city, and for the future. I would appreciate your support and your help in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Billy O'Connell. I'm a current City Councilman, and it's a pleasure to be here with you today. We live in a great city. We have some challenges in the future. For those of you who do not know me, I was born in New York City and raised in Ireland. I came back to New York when I was 17-years-of-age. I went to St. Francis College in Brooklyn, worked three jobs to pay my way through school. In 1990, I came to California, where I was a Los Angeles County Deputy, shut up for several years. Working in the community, we saw a need, my daughter and I, to deal with homelessness. We started an organization from the tailgate of our pickup truck. Since then, we've taken over 4,700 homeless women and children off the streets. We've helped over 1,300 women find work and retain it. I was the only City Councilman on this city council to file a federal lawsuit against the County of Orange when they tried to push people out of the riverbeds into our community, into our city, with no solution. I also stood up to the Orange County Board of Supervisors when they tried to put a tense city on toxic soil in our city. This was totally unacceptable. Some of the things that I've done while in city council is I've brought a H item to stop the toxic spraying of toxic pesticides in our parks to protect our families and our children. I also helped one of the first charters into Huntington Harbor. I also worked hard to save the fuel dock in Huntington Harbor. I also helped bring business into our community. When there was a need for good family businesses downtown, I helped bring a family business downtown. Also, I've helped bring some large businesses into our city. These are some of the things that I've done while working for you. Now, our police services are very important to me. Our public safety is very important to me, and a lot of times, our police are at the brunt of some of our folks in the community. A lot of people don't understand that our police officers can work 12, 13, 14 hours a day, for sometimes 14, 15 days in a row. I believe we need to support our officers. A lot of people do not realize that at times, we have up to 20,000 people being serviced by one or two police officers. This is unacceptable to me. When it comes to unfunded pension liabilities, we were proactive. We paid down more, and we will save the taxpayers millions of dollars by doing that. See, there's some of the things that we have done together, but some of the things that I have worked upon, and I truly believe we live in a great, great city. Now, also, I voted against high-density housing. I'm totally opposed to transit-oriented development. 100 units per acre is unacceptable, especially when we don't have the infrastructure to handle it, and that's what's been going on in our city. My name is Billy O'Connell. I'm number 11 on the ballot. I would appreciate your support and vote. If you would like to contact me, feel free to reach out at 714-943-0223. Re-elect Billy O'Connell, a number 11 on the ballot. Thank you so much, and I appreciate each and every one of you here today.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara Del Glaze, and I am here today with others just to let you know where I'm from. I came to Huntington Beach in 1974 and have fell in love with the community, raised my daughter here, and became a Realtor in the late '70s. I'm passionate about our housing here in the community, and one of the reasons why is my industry is very passionate about housing. is my industry is very passionate about housing. Many of the issues that we have today with homelessness is a lot of it has to do with the fact that our housing element has been a little skewed. And so my belief is that we can do this with better regulations and, you know, smaller density, setbacks, not as high, things of sort, taking traffic into consideration. I'm currently serving on Orange County Transit Authority, and our signals are beginning to be synchronized. They are in process of doing that right now, and next year, next spring, there'll be a Bravo bus on Highway 39. It'll be a seven-minute delay for pickup. The other thing that's pretty exciting about what we're doing, and I didn't know this when I first got elected, was our parks were really in bad shape. I know for a lot of you, you probably just drive and you see them all green, you think, oh, everything's wonderful. Well, it's not quite like that, and our city coffers really were almost empty. Luckily for us, we have some very dedicated people in this community who volunteered and brought the park back to life. I'm committed to creating some kind of a Central Park Foundation, and with the hope and the support of our residents here in town, we can do that, because they've done it in other areas, we can do it here as well. One of the things I became clearly aware of is our residents really did not have the facts. They didn't really know where to go to to find out how things were working. So I helped create Citizens Academy. We just finished our second class, and the people who have attended that have just been very, very excited about learning more about their community and the opportunities of what they can do to make their city better. The other item I'd like to bring to your attention is, I think it's really important that city leaders, we help our citizens know the information better. Dr. Lucy Jones came and spoke at our Senior Center. Why is that so important? Because people say things a lot of times online, and they frighten people without all the facts. So at the end of the day, I see going forward us really solving the problem for homelessness. I am a proponent and helped pass, it's going to pass next week, AB 448, which is going to help with our homelessness. I also helped with synchronization of our lighting and Wi-Fi, and helping encouraging people to purchase, not people, the city to purchase our light poles. Please, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Amory Hanson. Is this one working?
Yes.
Okay, it is. I am running for Huntington Beach City Council in 2018. I am a proud graduate of the Huntington Beach Citizens Academy. I also have spoken frequently at Huntington Beach City Council meetings and meetings of our various deliberative assemblies. My plans mainly consist of what I call smart urbanism, so this is a way of avoiding the more housing elements of urbanism, while also realizing that we are the fourth-largest city in Orange County. We need to be aiming toward a more urban environment without getting too much of the negative aspects, particularly the housing aspects. What we need to be doing is providing the services a typical urban city would provide to the city without increasing the population. That would include public safety. It would also include my proposal for a Huntington Beach Cultural and Community Center. I'm not going to go into too many details, because that is available on Monday. I discussed it at Monday's meeting, and I'd like to save time. So if you want to watch the Monday video where I discussed that, my public comments during the City Council meeting, you're free to do that. I definitely think, though, public safety, cultural and community center, and my third thing is that we need to do something about the homelessness problem, and I've said that before. So I'm number six on the ballot. My phone number is 714-371-5578, and my email is A-M-O-R-Y dot H-A-N-S-O-N-2016 at gmail.com. And if anyone wants to reach out to me, they're free to do so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go back over here.
Hello, my name is Ron Sterud. I was born here in Huntington Beach in 1971. My mother was born here in Huntington Beach in 1944, and my father, my grandfather arrived in 1915. We have 103-year history here in Huntington Beach. I currently share, or currently serve as Lynn Semeta's appointment as Vice Chair on the Finance Commission that Eric Peterson brought back. I originally got involved in Huntington Beach politics because I just looked around my city, and I just didn't understand what was taking place. I wasn't recognizing the city that I was born in. Our suburban beach culture had just kind of vanished overnight, and so I began investigating what was going on, and all of a sudden, high-density projects are popping up everywhere. We've got sober living homes all over town. We have short-term rentals just destroying our neighborhoods. So I got involved, and I'm here. I'm just a citizen that wants to solve problems, wants to restore our neighborhoods, protect our neighborhoods. I am a conservative Republican. I oppose increase in sales taxes, which the city staff has actually brought as recommendation to the Finance Commission. We shot that down. We need to protect our infrastructure and what's taking place. We're grossly under-improving our streets, and we have a police department that is, the actual physical department, is just falling apart. It's in complete, it's completely dilapidated. We have to support our public safety. We have to support our officers, and we've got to find financing in order to handle some of the infrastructure fixes that we must do, such as that police department. I'm not a bureaucrat. I am not trying to find all kinds of different items and things to add to our budget. I really feel that we need to get into our budget. We need to make cuts. We need to figure out what it is that we can afford, and we need to repair our city. My name is Ron Sterud. I'm running for City Council. I would appreciate your vote. I am number 13 on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Great opening statements. So now, we will have three open-ended questions, and these questions will have a response time of one and a half minutes each. And our first question is, tell us about your feelings regarding the potential of offshore drilling along the coastline. And we will start with Dan Kalmick, and we will go down the line. Somebody can give Dan a microphone?
There you go, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've been opposed to offshore drilling off the coast of Huntington Beach. I think a lot of us, I was much younger at the time, but the last oil spill in Huntington Beach. My wife's from Santa Barbara, and they very much remember the most recent spill and then the spill that happened back in the 70s. It's odd that Newport Beach doesn't have offshore drilling, and as you come to Huntington, it's kind of an identifying point of Huntington Beach. I'm opposed to it. I don't think that we need the resource in California as we are moving towards a more renewable energy supply. It's just not something that I think Huntington Beach offshore, I think it ruins one of the biggest things that we have going for us, which is tourism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I'm also against offshore drilling, not in all cases, but in the cases that have been especially described in the last few years. It would damage our environment, and I'm all about protecting our environment, preserving our parks and our open spaces as well. With anything that we do regarding our oceans, we need to safeguard our oceans, whether that's desalination or offshore drilling. So I stand against the current proposals that have been spoken about in the last few years regarding offshore drilling.
When I look around this room, I see hotel owners. I see how important our beaches are very important to the economic interests and viability of our city. So that's why I'm proud to share with each and every one of you here today, that several years ago, I hosted a bipartisan congressional press conference about offshore and oil that was washing up on our shores. Several months ago, I was proud to bring in a resolution to the city of Huntington Beach where I asked that the Trump administration to exempt California from the offshore oil drilling plans, just like they did in Florida. If it's good enough for Florida, it should be good enough for California, it should be good enough for Huntington Beach. We need to protect our oceans, we need to protect our beaches, and we do not need the exposure by offshore drilling. And I would love to see our City Council act upon this. Thank you.
I'm not in favor of Huntington Beach drilling offshore. I think we're in a world today where technology is available. We have wind and solar, conservation, and I think that those, you know, those are there. We'll just do our best to protect them. I've had the good fortune to actually go out and see them and have tours of them, and I blue-believe we're in good hands. Yeah, the event that took place in the 80s was horrible, and I think it's really made an impression on all of us here. It does impact, I just think there's other things that we can do here, and offshore drilling is not one of them.
I'd oppose offshore drilling as well. I think that it is unnecessary. I also think that the current administration has overreached into our local control by attempting to regulate offshore drilling on their own. I think if we were to have offshore drilling, which I would not support, but I would rather it come from the council than from the state or from the federal government. I also think that offshore drilling has a negative environmental impact, and I would note, I don't see Councilwoman Hardy here today, but she has said in the past that Huntington Beach is one of the few beaches, cities, in which the entire coast is visible from Pacific Coast Highway. I think it's important we keep it that way. Not frankly, I'm sure, but that we could keep it that way if we had offshore drilling.
Offshore drilling has been a part of our culture for my entire life. I'm a little hesitant to answer this question, as if it is something that is going to come before Huntington Beach City Council. I don't want to be having a presupposition on this item, so I have no, I have no comment, no issue, no stance.
Offshore drilling is an idea that's been foisted upon us by the federal government. What we can do here is to make sure that we lobby our legislators in Washington to oppose drilling and to elect representatives that will also carry that message. That's not a decision that we're going to make in Huntington Beach. None of us want to see drilling offshore. None of us want to put our beaches in jeopardy. So our efforts need to be working to make sure the people in Washington know what their constituents here in California have to say.
I'm a member of Surf Rider Foundation. That probably says a lot right there. I'm the Education Chair for the Huntington Beach Seal Beach Chapter. I believe in educating, not legislating. I know that kind of goes against some of my Surf Rider friends, where they want to legislate everything, but as far as offshore drilling, I do not agree with it. I was at that meeting where Billy brought that resolution forward. Surf Rider spoke at that meeting, you know, to try and get that passed, but it did not go through that evening, and for whatever reason. I then went to the very first coffee with Mayor Posey that he had over at Chick-fil-A, and I asked him point-blank in front of everybody, you know, hey, how come you didn't sign that resolution? What can we do to get it passed? Because we don't want that out there off our coast. We don't need that E field expanded. For those of you that don't know, the wells out there are on the E field, because that's what they designated that particular oil field, is the E field. So we got LE and all the other E oil rigs out there. Well, I was down Laguna Beach at the Drilling is Killing convention. I've lobbied my congressman, and our ocean is our economic engine. It drives our community. Without it, we might as well just all move inland.
All right. So if any of you, no one's really talking about offshore drilling, is really onshore drilling. If any of you see the big tower between Golden West and Seapoint, that is offshore drilling. Right now, they're drilling down and over to the rig. They're not going to have any more rigs out there. It's too costly for them to have that. It's a lot less expensive for them to drill down, drill over, and they put a pump down there, and they pump it up. So all along that coast there, they've dug a trench, and they have pumps. That's the most responsible way. It's under everything, you don't have the oil spills. That's what we're doing. So offshore oil, if you're talking about the rigs, I don't think they're going to build them. I don't think we need them. The reason they're not in Newport is there's not an oil field there. The oil field's in front of us. So, but the way we're doing it is the most responsible, because it's all underground. So in that case, I am for offshore drilling the way we're doing it, but I don't want to see more rigs out there, because they do have problems. But growing up here, it's changed so much. I mean, I remember with gasoline, you know, after you get out of the beach and wipe your feet off, all the tar off. We don't have that anymore. So we've done a great job keeping it clean. I think we still will, but the type of drilling that the oil companies are doing right now is very effective, very cost-effective, and very safe. So, and I am supportive of that.
I thought we almost had a general consensus. We were close.[1540.25][1540.25](Laughter). I'm in complete opposition of offshore oil. We no longer need to drill off our coast. As Billy said, they quickly said no to the Florida coast. With fracking now opening up, we're very oil-independent, so if they want to drill in other parts of California, we'll leave that up to the other cities to fight, but personally, for Huntington Beach, the need to drill off our coast is no longer necessary from the standpoint of supply side. And with that said, I'll keep it short. I'm in complete opposition of offshore oil drilling for the city of Huntington Beach. Thank you.
I think it's pretty common sense to say that we in Huntington Beach are the custodians of our ocean out in front, on our front door, and that we need to get more involved with pressuring our senators and congressmen and get to the Trump administration, I don't know if you really can, to tell them, look, we don't need any more offshore drilling on our coast. There's smarter ways to create energy than reversing back to the dinosaur age. Like someone mentioned prior, it was commonplace when we were kids to come out of the ocean and have to scrape tar balls off the bottom of our feet, and we don't need to go back in that direction. I think we in Huntington Beach are more progressive and more inventive than to allow such a old technology to re-boom in our community, and I strongly believe that we can stop this initiative if everyone gets on the phone and calls their senator and their congressman and puts their foot down. And so saying that, I am definitely against any more drill sites in Huntington Beach.
Thank you. Okay, question number two. So this is about the city budget. One of the greatest issues facing the city right now is pension liabilities. What are your thoughts on how to address that issue? And we will start with DK.
Thank you. So obviously, it's a very complex issue, pension liabilities. I'm not going to sit here and say that I've got the silver bullet. We've got great minds trying to solve the issue, but the bottom line is, if we could have better performing years with the investment of Calpers, like last year, they were yielding well over 10%. The unfortunate thing is, previous years are at sub-1%. So when you have that kind of diverse return, there's always going to be a problem with funding the pensions. So I don't necessarily have the answer to how we're going to do that. What I would want to look at is, what are the answers, and who can bring the type of answers? My style of leadership is, if I'm not the expert, I'm going to surround myself with what they call subject matter experts. So I'd be looking for other people that have the expertise in that type of finance and those types of solutions, but the unfunded pension liabilities, I think last year, I read, one of our council members said that we were not able to contribute the additional $1 million on the paydown. So I know our city's working hard to solve these issues. You know, I'm all for physical responsibility, but I'm not going to kid you and tell you I have the silver bullet to the answers. So with that said, I would be looking to align myself with subject matter experts. Thank you.
Next, on the, down the road, yeah.
I'm going to have to agree with TK. She said that pretty eloquently. This is a very touchy, hot-button issue, as it should be, because it involves people's retirement account. I know from myself personally... I know from myself personally, when my retirement account falls short, I have to pick up the slack, but I don't think it's fair of the residents of Huntington Beach to have to pull out their wallets and pick up the slack when there's issues facing them, like their curbs and their sidewalks crumbling and their streets cracking. Some people's streets in this town haven't had their streets re-slurried in over 10 years. And it's, it's, it's not fair that the residents should have to pull up all the slack. I agree wholeheartedly that this is going to take coming to the table with more than one solution. And I don't know if part of the solution could be that the Police Officers Union could possibly in down years contribute more, but it's going to take experts that know what is the right solution for everybody and the fair way to move forward.
So the pension liability issue overhangs, I think, everything we do in our city. This is something that the council's been talking about for five or six years now, 10 in certain circumstances. This should have been solved. This is an Excel spreadsheet. We know based on a long-term projection with different calculated rates of return for Calpers, what that number's going to be and we can predict that. Essentially, we're not going to be able to cut our way out of this. You know, our employee staffing is way down across the boards. PD has just gotten back up to some of the numbers that they had in the nineties and that's still obviously not enough. We see crime rising. We're not seeing police patrolling our streets at night. I know in my community, I was knocking on doors last weekend and half the people said, you know, I'd like to see a police car drive through my neighborhood every so often. And the data supports that, right? If you look at our general plan update numbers, it shows that we're down on staff in certain areas, especially for fire. Don't get in a car accident on the bridge going into Seal Beach. You're waiting a long time for someone to cut you out of your car. And we can't build our way out of it. That's too long-term of a solution to get us to where we're going to need. We're going to need $60 million over the next 10 years. So it's a solvable issue. We have to grow our way from inside the community, right? Look at Beach Boulevard. We've got vacant sales tax generating businesses. We've taken several types of business off the table, right? Cannabis has been off the table now for several years. That will help get us to this pension liability, but we're going to, I don't see any way we don't have to pay this, short of the city going bankrupt, which I do not support. Thank you.
So I was speaking earlier a little bit about how we need a long-term financial plan and that's completely true if we're ever going to address this issue. Last year, when I went to go write my platform, I asked city staff, how many years in advance is our long-term financial plan? And they said five years. When they gave me the actual PowerPoint presentation, it was only two and a half. It went through 2020. So that's not entirely a long-term financial plan if you're not planning long-term. My budget actually addresses this. It doesn't raise your taxes. It works in the confines of the current revenue increases that was projected by our assistant city manager. She said it would be 2.85% to 3.05% revenue, annual revenue increases every year. My budgets are actually very conservative. They only use 2.5%. And then in the last portion of the budget, it uses 2%. So they're very conservative estimates. So we can't really solve these issues that we're all talking about unless we actually plan long-term financially, whether that's actually having a five-year plan, which I don't even think that's long-term, or it's a 10-year plan, or what my budget calls for, which is 30 years, which it could be formulaic, like an Excel spreadsheet, like he mentioned. But on top of that, you talked about contributions. Well, safety's already paying the max that they can pay. They're paying 9%. So we can't really raise their contributions. That's not really a solution. People are talking about the homeless issue on top of that. I wanted, everyone touched on it. We only have two police officers on the homeless issue that are dedicated to that issue. We need more police officers dedicated to that issue. If we don't plan long-term, the issue's going to get worse. We're already depleted police officer-wise. I'm running out of minutes, out of seconds. I only have five seconds. Go look at the platform, look at my plan, and if that's something you can rally behind, I would appreciate your vote.
When it comes to unfunded pension liability, there's plenty of blame to go around for everyone. When you look at the investment policy of the board up in Sacramento, basically, they have policies of politically correct investment. There are certain groups of companies that they will not invest in. And what they have done is they have set the platform, they started off at 7.5%, now they just reduced it to 7%. So when there's a shortfall, the people, the cities that are paying into this, the citizens pick up the tab in the shortfall, and I think that's wrong. I think they should be held accountable. If they're running this pension plan, they should be, they should be meeting the goals that they're setting out and not have anybody else pick up the shortfall. Now, years ago in our city, when we had excess funds, instead of dumping the funding into the pension, they decided to spend it on other areas of the city. Now, we're feeling the pain of those decisions. But I'm also proud to share with you that we have a very good finance department because we have made decisions where we have paid down in advance funding of unfunded pension liabilities by saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. Over the next 20 years, we will have saved the taxpayers millions of dollars. So I will continue to advocate for that policy. It's very, very simple. The debits have to meet the credits and I'm proud to say, as a city councilman, we have balanced our budget here in the city. Thank you.
We have a balanced budget because of the conscientiousness of our finance department. A lot of our issues were 25 years and 30 years they're out. Because some of the decisions that we've made and paid it down, Mr. O'Connell's right, we're going to save here close to $58 million, but that doesn't happen overnight. When they lower the investment rate for us, they lower it for everybody, so we're in the same boat. I must say that our city has taken some excellent steps to lower the, I think it's on the medical, retired medical and also on one of the other ones, we've actually paid it off. The other item, and Mr. Kalmak referred to this, the revenue is so important. If you have a budget at home, you need to have money coming in. So we need to create ways all across the board to have revenues come in because we, when Calpers or the state makes a decision, we don't have our authority. We don't get to do it. We have to do what they say. So I would just say, I think some of the decisions we've made over the last five years help, but next year, we have $4 to $5 million check to write. And if you have only less than 2% coming into your community, any of the, over, the money that we bring in goes right there. So we don't have money, extra money to put to the roads or to things that need building or updating our Wi-Fi. We're so dated in that arena, that's another topic.
All right, I'm Ray. As I said, as Mr. Kennedy said, the, the, the subject matter experts are needed. We don't, we certainly do need more of that. The other thing, Mr. Kennedy, I would take a step further from what Mr. Kennedy says. I don't think this is really something the Finance Commission, as gray as they are, Mr. Steroud, can handle. It's a very broad, narrow, specific topic that I think justifies its own task force. And we need a pension task force, in my opinion, to address this specific issue. The only, none of the candidates here have an accounting background. Some have academics, some have business. None of them have accounting background. We need actual people who can look at the pensions we have and say what we can do now, who have backgrounds in accounting and finance.
Start again up here.
Well, not to debate or argue, Mr. Hanson, but I have been a financial advisor for 27 years. I am an expert in pension liabilities and I will be able to serve the city of Huntington Beach with regard to this issue. One of the things that was said up here, I believe it was Mr. Kalmak that said, return is something that we should be able to predict. We cannot. We are not going to be able to predict the return that is going to happen in the future. This is a serious issue. Mr. O'Connell, Councilman O'Connell, did say socially responsible investing has been hurting us and it has, and we need to actually get with our unions. We need to go up to Calpers. We need to argue with them, debate with them, encourage them, that they need to open up the investment field and be much broader. How we hire our public safety and our city employees needs to change. We need to look at non-sworn officers to do some of the non-sworn office type of responsibilities and jobs. We need sworn officers on the street. So we need to hire people in the private sector into jobs that can be handled, pay them $100,000 rather than the $250,000 that they're, that each officer is required. That will actually increase our numbers on the street, increase our public safety and decrease our total expense long-term. We must make serious changes. We have to have financial, or some financial background, or candidates or council people to do this. We also need to address the MOUs. We need to have strong council members that are going to negotiate with the unions and fight MOUs.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's not a lot we can do about what Calpers has already done. The city has a couple of options. City can raise revenues. I don't see that being a large amount of money to help with this particular problem. City has a fixed budget. 72% goes to employees, 15% to infrastructure, which leaves 13% in your general fund and increasing Calpers comes out of that 13%. What's going to be the tough way to do this is going to have to be with negotiations with all the employees who are part of the system. Now, do we have a city council that has a good relationship with the unions so that they can enter into bargaining that will allow the city to function and not take away from other important projects because of the money that goes into the retirement? These are all negotiable. All the ideas that you're hearing, you have to negotiate with our police, fire and the other employees. So what we need are a council that's able to foster a good relationship with our employees so that we can get some changes made.
I agree with a lot of the folks that are up here that I'm sitting next to on my right and left. If 2008 hadn't occurred, we wouldn't even be talking about this subject right now. Unfortunately, that's the way of the world and that's what happened. Anybody out there in a public pension? Anybody? So myself, I'm in CalSTRS and I personally know that teachers are going to be paying more into their CalSTRS accounts in the next few years. Their rate is going to be going up to 13% of their paycheck, okay? And Mr. Burley, I know that 9% is what we can demand, but you can negotiate up to 13% of paychecks for those people. Now, I'm not saying do that. I'm just saying, just like Mr. Simon said here, we need to put everything on the table. We need to look at everything. We even need to look at, maybe we get out of the Calpers, you know, for new people that we bring in. When I used to work with companies that we had, they got rid of the DBA that I was involved with. And they said, we're going to go to an, thank you, we're going to go to an IRA, we're going to go to other accounts in which to fund your retirement. So we got out of the DBAs. So I'm not saying to do it, I'm just saying, let's take a look at some of these things because we need to put everything on the table if we're going to right the ship.
Thank you. So we've started to trust the council and we take some money and throw it into there instead of Calpers because we make a better return. We keep going through different exercises to try to make our money here and then we can put it in. We changed our fiscal year. It's saving us, I can't remember how many million, nine million or something like that. So we're doing it. We do have to negotiate with the unions and we've been doing a pretty good job of that over the last few years. You know, I wish you could just give raises, you know, all the time, but sometimes we're giving non-perceval things, things that are a little more responsible, add to their medical or something to try to keep those costs down. You need a council to look at all the options. I'd love to say, hey, from here on, any new employee gets that, but we can't. That's California law and it's Calpers. Calpers, we really need to get, and it was mentioned, our unions up there. There's only one guy up there from Corona, the sheriffs or something, that goes up there and fights with these guys. We need our unions to go up and say, hey, this is our retirement and help the city fight them to make better investment policies. And going through and keep, keep looking at where we can cut, but eventually, we're going to, we're going to have to cut things we don't want. So we have to find ways, define new revenue, creative ways, and I think we can do that. We have a great staff and we'll just see what happens.
Okay. So we have one more question before we go into our closing statement. And the question is, tell us your thoughts about the regional housing needs assessment requirement and how it impacts our city. And we'll start with Billy O'Connell.
The regional housing needs assessment is, it's a, it's a survey done by the state of California and it dictates to each and every city throughout California, how many affordable housing needs, units that each city is supposed to have. And I have issues with that because I don't think the state of California should be dictating to us in our city, how many different housing units we should have and when we, where we should have them and where we shouldn't have them. So I do have some issues with that and I think a better alternative can be arrived through local control and working with the people from the state.
Do it that way.
I'm in agreement with Mr. O'Connell. The state, we are, we're really passionate here in Huntington Beach about keeping local control. And it's only going to get more challenging because of some of the bills that are trying to be passed right now in Sacramento. I think locally, when we, when we plan something and it, it sets up, we have our better, better local control and then we can assess what our housing needs are. I think over the years, I think our city's done a really good job of assessing low housing, lower-cost housing. The challenge, I think today, what we have is that because our dirt has become so expensive here in Huntington Beach, it's sometimes hard to do that. But I would rather have us decide as a city where we want to put housing rather than having been told by the state.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor's plan for a local control and I think of regional housing needs assessment is an element where we do need local control. Frankly, I thought the assessment was done by the Southern California Association of Governments. I didn't think it was done by the state, but maybe they do it for the different associations. In any event, I think regional housing is frankly an issue that sounds like it's not even the city. It's just they go around different cities and say, okay, this is how many housing you need. So I think each city should be doing its own housing assessment or a minimum each county because the Southern California Association of Governments does not just include Orange County, it also includes San Bernardino, Riverside and Los Angeles County. So we have a lot of cities there that need more, a minimum, the counties need more discretion about their assessments, if not the cities.
Back up here.
Our arena numbers passed down to us by SCAG. I think we need, as a council, we, as a city, we need to stand up Sacramento. We need to let them know that we are charter city. We have the ability to actually set our housing needs in our own town. We have a stable to slightly decreasing population. That's true of all of California. They keep issuing new and higher numbers and it's not justified and we need a council that will stand up to Sacramento.
I'm in agreement with that, just like to keep the federal government out of our business. I think we need to keep the state out of it in instances like this. This is not an area that's amenable to forcing in more housing. We're pretty well built out, but the type of housing they want to put in is not, does not fit with the plan of Huntington Beach and I wouldn't have supported.
Being passionate about putting the town back in Surf City. I want to maintain local control over what we can do and I don't know what that will take. I'll be the first one, I'm going to raise my hand and say, I don't know. You know, what will it take? You know, but I'm willing to get out there and learn, listen and figure that out. You know, but I'm willing to get out there and learn, listen, and figure that out because if we want our sons and daughters to be able to live here in a place that we call home, we need to do what's right for the future and for our kids' kids. And to be told what to do is, to me, you know, almost abominable. And, you know, we kind of have also brought some of this on ourselves with some of the development that we've had, because you're supposed to have X number of units for all the new units you have. And so, at least from my understanding, and someone please correct me if I'm wrong, and so I think that we've also put us in this little hole that we have. So let's maintain local control, but let's do what's right for, you know, Surf City.
Arena numbers are garbage. They've been part of destroying what we had as organic, affordable housing in Huntington Beach. When you build $3,000 a month apartments, one-bedroom apartments, the small unit you could have downtown where you were paying 1,200 a month just went to 1,800 a month. So it has ruined our affordable housing, and to have the government sit there and try to dictate who lives or how we live in Huntington Beach is ridiculous. Right now, we're going through our new arena numbers. We have representation on SCAG. We need to fight it. I know Cerritos did. They went from, in the last round, they went from about 1,200 to 46. So it's a matter of getting our staff up there, getting our representation up there. I was the rep for three years. They had a half a trillion-dollar tax they want to put on you. Myself and one guy from Elise Oviedo were the only two that voted against that in, out of 86 reps. So that organization that comes up with all this doesn't have any concern about Huntington Beach. They're looking at a region, and they want to basically take the anchor that is LA and get rid of its problems and push it out into Orange County. So I think we need to fight the arena numbers, and we are a charter city. We can maintain local control on that.
I think we're going to do it. I think we're going to have a general consensus here. I'm 100% in agreement. You can't allow outside influences to dictate how you build in your city, utilizing just the basic laws of supply and demand should set the policy for the city. So 100% in agreement with everybody on this council that we have to maintain our local control. We cannot have Sacramento or people that have no concern for Huntington Beach, for the city, for what our residents want dictate to us the housing policies. They're too far removed. They have no dog in the fight, as you may say, and I think Eric said it very well as well. So I'm 100% in agreement that they have to stay out of the city Huntington Beach and allow us to dictate our own housing policies. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. The regional housing assessment is a one-size-fits-all plan and does not take into consensus that Huntington Beach is pretty much 95% built out. What I would like to see is that we put more investment into our Huntington Beach inclusion housing program and acquire more properties, more depressed properties, and put them into that lease program so people, residents, and our children, and our children's children can have the same opportunity we have to live in such a beautiful community. Thank you.
Dan Zoyez is missing the microphone.
Thank you. So I need 90 minutes, not 90 seconds to answer this. As your planning commissioner for the last six years, I've been intimately involved in our arena number and our housing element. Everything that was said here makes sense, but what if we can't? This is the issue that's going to face us. What if we can't keep California, Sacramento, out of our city? What if we can't fight our arena numbers? What happens then? What happens when our 400 units that we are set up to zone for, not a building target, zone for, in our city becomes 2,000? What if we can't convince SCAG that we can't do this? We need people there that are willing to roll up their sleeves and make these hard decisions. Sure, we can sue Sacramento all we want on this, but at the end of the day, if we lose, we're now outside of compliance, and the state of California can take our building permits ability away. They've done it in 40-some other cities in the state of California. It's something that I'm very worried about. And I'm not saying we need to build high-density development everywhere. I'm not saying that that's part of the plan, but as you come back into your high-density, excuse me, come back into your housing element, high-density has to be part of that. State of California says so. We've lost our local control because we've come out of compliance in this. The issue for me is that we already have high-density development in single-family residential areas. You've got multiple families living in single-family homes. Go outside and look why there's no parking on your street because you've got multiple families living in there. It's how do we keep, how do we make attainable housing available in our city, and what does that look like? Those are the conversations we need to be having. Our arena number is going to be this thing that's going to be up there for as long as possible. I don't think we can meet it in our city currently, and I don't, we had a plan under the Pechenger Court or specific plan, but we're out of compliance now, and the state's going to come in with its big, heavy hand and tell us what to do. And what happens if we lose? That's what I think we need, that's why we're going to need council people up there that understand land use and understand how to move forward in the city. Thank you.
This is a really incredibly difficult issue to solve when you have council members that one year they say, "High-density development is the future of Huntington Beach," and the next year they say, "Regain and retain local control." It's really easy to change your position usually when you have that kind of perspective. So, you know, typically, if you look at the RHNA numbers, they're just not realistic. They're going to have to start rezoning people out of their homes in the distant future. Look at the population increases that they eventually have in there. They eventually tail off. I'm going to be a straight shooter with you. We need to, you know, support Michael Gates, our city attorney, in these lawsuits. As your city councilman, since it's city councilman, I will make sure that he has the resources he needs in order to preserve our city. Because as a young homeowner in Huntington Beach, I have a distinct interest in how this city will look 30 years from now. I don't want it to look like Miami or Ventura even. They've even started to do high-density, more high-density development over there. So, you know, be very aware of where people are and where their voting records are on that high-density development issue. I've been very clear where I'm at on it since the beginning. That's why I signed a pledge against high-density development. And if you're against high-density development, I would urge you to read my platform and support me in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now it's time in our program where we get to closing statements. Each candidate will have three minutes to have their closing statements, and make sure you tell everybody your website or information that they can find more facts about you. And we will start with Brian Burley. Three minutes.
Firstly, thank you again for inviting me out here. I really appreciate it. I wanted to clear up one thing about CalPERS contributions. If it's 9% from what I was told by both city staff and the research I've done, and as well as the Firefighters Association, so I know there's different requirements if they're not in safety. But anyways, on another point, it's been a great process running for office, and I really just tried to lay out the numbers with you guys and be honest with you about how I feel we should approach issues. You know, if people are talking about, "Do we need a accounting background? What kind of background do we need?" Well, I got a degree in political economy. I can put numbers out on you and tell you the realities of what we're facing and what we need to do. That's something we're not even doing in City Hall, and that's a culture change that we need. And in issues like high-density development, it's incredibly important that we're transparent about that. And, you know, you'll see a lot of flyers throughout this election about, you know, people saying they're against high-density development, but they're really not. We know where people stand on things, and it was pretty interesting, you know, last week, the Chamber of Commerce. I kind of view it as like a two-part organization. There's the small business owners that work really, really hard, and they're represented by the Chamber of Commerce in a lot of ways, and they network at events. And then there's the Political Action Committee, which might as well be called the Chamber of Developers. And, you know, we need to really educate people on that and what we need for our city. I'm not a special interest candidate. I think I've been very clear about that since the beginning. In fact, look at my fundraising numbers. We don't even need the money. We're just spreading the word naturally because people simply just want a better option. They need new blood in their city hall, giving us a better option. And that's why my campaign is for the people, for the city, and for the future. And if you're against a special interest, or if you're for a candidate that's going to fight for you every day when he wakes up in the morning and even not even sleep, I'm your guy. Thank you for your time. I would greatly appreciate your support, and have a great rest of your day.
It's been a pleasure to be here with each and every one of you today. As your city councilman, it's been a pleasure to work hard and serve you over the last three and a half, nearly four years. I just want to be specific with each and every one of you here today. Nobody owns Billy O'Connell. I have voted against high-density development. I have put my own skin in the game. I have always been for the people. I have always put the people of the city of Huntington Beach above the politics of this city. I have seen members of this city council circumvent the will of the people in this city. I promise you that I will never do that. I'm a small business owner. I have helped some of the most disenfranchised members of our community, and I will continue to do that. I have a big tent where everybody's welcome, Democrat, Republican, Independent, Green, poor, rich, all alike. I will work hard for each and every one of you in our community. Some people think, some people talk, and some people tell. I have done it, I'm doing it, and I will continue to work hard for each and every one of you in this room. So I would appreciate your support. I'm number 11 on the ballot. My website is www.billyforhb.com. My cell phone number is 714-943-0223. I believe as a city council member, we have an obligation to the seniors in our community, to the families in our community, to the youth, to the children. We should leave something better behind for the people that come behind us. It's not rocket science. Let's stop playing politics and put the people of this city first. Thank you. I appreciate your support. I'm number 11 on the ballot, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. It is wonderful to be with you this afternoon here, getting to share some of the things and the ideas that we have. I would ask for your vote. I would like to build again on the success that we're having. I know it's been very, very slow, but we are starting to see the light on homelessness. We are building our task force, and I'm proud to say that I am a part of the county effort representing our city through the, gee, I just hit a bar, next number, AB448. And that is hopefully bringing the region together to solve our housing problem. I will continue to build on improving our parks and coming up with a foundation and building on the people who really want to do this because I think it's a quality-of-life issue. You know, I remember people, and even here today, we're talking about the cost of pensions and the different things. But after I got elected, it's what it really comes down to, in my opinion, is that people really want a good quality of life. And if they call their city, they want to be able to have somebody respond to them if there's an issue. And I've done that, and I've gotten a lot of solutions for residents that were just pulling their hair out. The one thing that hasn't been talked about, and unfortunately, the gentleman has left, but visit Huntington Beach has been one of the great things that has developed over the last 10 years, and they've done an awful lot for us because when they're thinking of tourism, happen to be in a hotel here that brings a lot of revenue into our community, it generally is making our city best, better. The other thing that I have to acknowledge is, we have made progress, but when I first was elected, our computers in our city hall were about 15 years old, and most of the software that supported them is outdated. So we need more dock fiber through the city. There's ways that we can build on revenue with that, if we have that. And the benefits is that things just run smoother. We just introduced, I don't know if you've heard about it, My, it's a new app, MyHB, and it's a technology that you can now, you know, if you see something going on in the community or see something broken, and you can send it directly to the public works, they'll respond. And then in addition, we haven't given up on the traffic management. Orange County, we have OC Flex starting next month in the north part of town. That's kind of like an Uber, Uber van. It will be on call service. And lastly, I would just leave you with this. My name is Barbara Del Glaze. I've lived in the community 45 years. I am committed to making this city a better place to live in, and I would ask for your support. I am collaborative, and I am consensus-building, and that's really how we get things done here in Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Is it my turn? Yes. Okay. My closing statement is eight words and my website. So before I get to that, I would like to issue an apology to Mr. Steroud. It appears that I forgot that he had a prior career prior to his services on the Investment Advisory Board and the Finance Commission. I apologize for the error. I think also that, however, I maintain my position that a specific pension task force is needed for this issue. In terms of my closing statement, my closing statement is that, my closing statement is, "Let's restore Huntington Beach to its former glory." And my website is amoryhanson2016.blogspot.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going back up here.
Again, my name is Ron Steroud, and I am asking for your vote on November 6, 2018 for city council. I'm a little surprised by some of the answers that were given tonight on this, or this afternoon on this panel. We have a sitting council member who has recused himself so many times, I don't think there has been an HDD vote that he has even cast a vote on. Both Dan Kalmick on Planning Commission has voted for high-density in downtown. High-density is defined as something that is greater than 30 units to, 30 units to an acre, and we just had at the old Mandic Motors lot, something that was approved for over 45, 45 units an acre. It's surprising to me that some of the things that are coming out of my opponents in this If there weren't 15, if there wasn't a problem within our city council, there wouldn't be 15 candidates. In 2016, I ran, I got 24,000 votes, and I thank the people in the city that have actually voted for me, that recognize that I am a citizen representative. I am not a special interest candidate. I really want what's best for Huntington Beach, and what is best for Huntington Beach is what the citizens say. And they do not want high-density. They do not want sober living homes, and they do not want short-term rentals. It is overwhelming that the comments through the forums and various places, Huntington Beach Community Forum, Michael Daley's forum, has really indicated this. I represent the citizens. I want to represent the citizens, and I want to help restore Huntington Beach to what it has been and what it should be. My name is Ron Steroud. I respectfully ask for your vote on November 6. I am ballot designation number 13. Thank you.
Dr. Michael Simons, I'm number 14 on your ballot, so make me your Valentine, although it's not February. So you can. You've heard a lot of common themes here today, so what separates me from everybody else? And I'd like to say it's experience. I've done this for a long time, between the Department of Consumer Affairs and the school boards, 35 years of sitting on boards, making important constructive decisions. I understand the city. I've sat on the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, been on the Community Services Commission, and those of you that are happy with Dog Beach, I'm one of the people that was on it when we voted for it. I've had a history of making good decisions. We talked about, Casey, about the STIRS and PERS. We're going to be hit with up to 18% of our budget in two years, and the school district has the money. We put it aside before. We made prudent decisions with our money, and I'd like to be able to bring some of that decision-making to the city. We have 1,200 employees in the school district. I think that's more than the city has. We have a budget of $200 million. I know the city's about $300 million, but what's a million, $100 million, you know, between friends? So I'd like your support in November. I think my experience will enable the city to move forward in a positive, constructive manner without infighting. I sense perhaps not a good working relationship with some of the current members on the city council, and I think it's time for a bit of a change. Thank you for being here today. I appreciate the chamber putting this on. Appreciate my wife for being here. She's a Marina grad, so she's local too. So please give me your support. Thank you.
First, thank you, Michelle. Thank you, chamber, for having all of us here. It's been a pleasure. It's been a fun afternoon, very enlightening for me, first time in front of, you know, all you successful business people. The word "compete" is an old Latin word, and it actually doesn't mean us going at it. The word "compete" is an old Latin word and it actually doesn't mean us going at it face-to-face. Compete actually means "come strive with me." That's what it actually means in Latin, "come strive with." And I'm looking at what everyone said here. I'm looking at Dr. Simons, what he said, "The quality of life is deteriorating." Mr. Peterson was saying that we need transparency here. DK, he said, "I'm gonna deliver results." Mr. Ellis, he said, "This is a great community." You have Dan, he says that he has lots of public foundations that he's part of. Brian Burley, we've heard it several times, he's an Excel man, so he has that spreadsheet down. Billy, he's a homelessness guy, he has tackled those problems. Barbara is passionate about real estate. We have Mr. Hanson, he wants to have smart urbanism. And Ron is the oldest of the local citizens here, family-wise, so thank you to your family. So that's kind of just a recap. So how do you separate all of this? When we're all trying to strive for the same thing, we're all trying to make Huntington Beach great. Now, I know that some people say, "Well, I have this and I have that." But I have a vision. And again, that vision is to make it a town once again. And I think we can do that by focusing on our youth, focusing on safety, and focusing on technology. And by doing those things, we can make Huntington that town once again that we remember when we were kids growing up. And so that's what separates us. There's lots of experience up here. I mean, I would be proud to serve with anybody up here on City Council. You guys are fantastic, the women are fantastic, you know, and I just want to make this city the way it used to be. And I think that we can do that. And there's an old Indian saying, when talking about youth, that says, "We're living here now because our children are loaning us the land." And if you think about, that's really true. Okay? We're here because of our kids. And I want to pass that down to our kids. I'm Casey Fokler, I'm number four on the ballot, and really easy to get a hold of me, it's surfcitycouncil.org. So I own that website. So surfcitycouncil.org. You can find my phone number there, I'll also give it to you, it's 714-722-1710. Thank you very much again, Michelle and everybody else for having us here.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming and listening to a bunch of politicians for a few hours, it's hard. But when I came to council, I promised a lot and I've kept those promises. I've kept my ear to the ground, I've listened to the public, I've done something about the high density, I've done something about transparency. I see, I serve as liaison to many boards that I've tried to help out, a lot of, we have a great community of volunteers. As we go forward, as I go forward on council, I'll continue to do the same thing. We have to work, we have some financial problems, we have to work together as a council, we have to work with our public employees, unions, we have to lobby the state, we have to keep working on these things. I've built those relationships over the past four years and I'll continue to work those relationships. The one thing we didn't talk about up here really was economic development. I've been very involved in that over my four years. I've been working with our economic development partner, Boeing has sold 32 acres of their property. I was very instrumental in helping them bring the correct business to Huntington Beach, bringing the technology businesses, and that's what that's set for right now. There's a half a million square feet under roof that's gonna be built there. And that is to attract high-tech industries. Our region has that, we have engineering schools, we have engineering companies, Rocket Labs is over there, there's all sorts of innovative companies and that's what we want to bring. Originally, they were saying, "Oh, we want the medical industry." I said, "The medical industry's in Irvine." Irvine feeds the medical industry, we're not gonna pull it there, let's work what we have. We have Boeing here, we have aerospace, let's work with that. They said they will have those type of jobs here. They won't manufacture here, it's too expensive, they're going to Tennessee and Texas, but they will have those engineers in this area. So working with economic development to increase that revenue is essential to our plan going forward. I'll continue to do that, I will continue to represent the citizens of this community. I love it, I've served you for almost four years, I served as a Marine for five years, served as a Scoutmaster for 10 years, I was on the Finance Commission for two, I was on the Planning Commission for four. Service is something that sort of beat into my head as a kid from my parents, so I have served and I continue to serve and I thank you for electing me to serve you. And I ask for your vote again. I'm number eight on the ballot, the website is ericwithak for HB.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And Eric, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your service, and I mean that. I've worked with many a veteran and they're the finest and I love the veterans. Thank you, Mrs. Harrington, for hosting this forum and the City, the Chamber of Commerce. So let me start with a poem, my wife's gonna, she's just gonna go crazy, what are you up there rapping your poems? But there's a difference between a politician and a political candidate. So I wrote a short poem many, many years ago and just the first verse was, "Politician, man, did you forget who I am? It wasn't long ago, you understood my needs, conveyed to me with pathetic pleads. I'll do this, I'll say that, I'll do anything, I'm just a bureaucrat." That's a politician. I'm running as a political candidate. What I bring to the table is leadership. Leadership does matter. In the private sector, you're held accountable, you have to produce results or you don't stay at the top of any organization. So that's something that I believe amongst my peers here, and I like what you said, Casey, I appreciate that, competing. But the thing that sets me apart is I think I have more executive leadership than anybody sitting up here, than potentially anybody on the current council, from the standpoint of leading large organizations. My mentor built a company employing over 1,000 people and I sat at the top of an org chart that reported directly to him for decades, decade, I won't use it decades, for decades of executive leadership. Leaders build consensus, they listen to people. One of my taglines is honest, fair, common sense leadership. That's one of the things that I think is lacking, and I think Ron said it very well or somebody just did. If our city was headed down the right path, I wouldn't be sitting at this table. I believe 15, 16, 17 people up here running for City Council are indicative that we're looking for change as a city. And I can bring that type of change, I bring a different perspective. As Billy said, "Nobody owns me, I don't need your money, I'm not gonna place my votes based on reelection." If I serve one term, that's fine, I would be happy with term limits at one term. I understand there's a learning curve, but I'm here to be the voice of Huntington Beach, the residents that I've spoken to for decades, that in the recent years are not happy with the course that we're heading. That's not to say that everybody's bad on the City Council, there's some fine members, but I think the collective group needs some refurbishment. So I want to be that voice. I pledge to you engagement and no complacency. I think that there's been certain complacency in effect. It's an election year now, so everybody's hot on top of the sober living and the homeless. But these have been issues for years that I think I would have been more in the forefront addressing these and not waiting till I'm asking for your vote. So those are some of the things that I believe that I can bring to the city of Huntington Beach. I love this city, been here since 1962. I'm gonna give you my phone number, no crank calls, Michael Daley, 714-342-5942. I'm gonna let it go to voicemail, you can articulate your thoughts, I will return your phone call. My website is kennedyforhb.com. And if it's right, if it's optimal, it's a 10, I'll stay away from the perfect 10. I'm number 10 on the ballot, I would appreciate your vote. I will serve you with honesty and I'll be transparent and I will be your voice if you believe in my platform, that's why you would elect me, that's how I'll vote. And I thank you for your time, Huntington Beach. Thank you.
All right. Well, I think I proved my point. Everyone on this stage here is very passionate about Huntington Beach and we all care and want the best to Huntington Beach. People gotta understand that the old Huntington Beach, that ship has sailed and it'll never be what it was. Huntington Beach is what it is now and it's gonna be what we project it to be in the future. It's a progressive town, it has to grow, but not through growth through high-density housing. It has to grow through investment, opportunities, and technology. I agree, and the aerospace industry has always been huge here in Orange County, that's what brought my family here. My dad got a job at Hughes Aircraft and we moved to Huntington Beach in '77. One of the things I've been concerned about and I've seen is that you can't build walls, walls do not keep people out. Walls keep people in and it starves a community. It starves them of innovation, it starves them of progress, it starves them of culture. And I believe everyone in the community has an important role to play and everyone deserves respect. And everyone is here for a purpose and a reason. This area has been a multicultural community for thousands of years, dating back to 10,000 years ago with indigenous people, 300 years ago with Spanish Americans, 100 years ago with the Japanese farming community, and most recently in the 80s with the Vietnamese communities. I think we need to be open to all options and all cultures and be able to work together to keep Huntington Beach vibrant, innovative, productive, and a beautiful place to live. And these are the qualities that I believe the city is built on, is culture, innovation, and I believe that for me on the City Council, those are the building blocks that will help Huntington Beach stay innovative. And that's what I'll stand for as your City Council Member, Representative. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dan Thompson for putting this together and Michelle for hosting today. My name's Dan Kalmick, as you guys probably know already. As your Planning Commissioner, I've seen how this city has changed through development. We didn't complete making development look like what residents want. And you know, I want to talk more about myself, but as Mr. Steroud said, having not served on the Planning Commission and not understanding zoning code and legal findings, my votes on the Planning Commission have had to go against what I would personally disagree with. As a Planning Commissioner, you have to make legal defensible findings for a project. And if our zoning code says you can build a four-story building, I can't compel an applicant to build a three-story building. It would be illegal. And the city tried to do this years ago, got sued and lost and ended up having to come up with money. So what I'm running to do is change the zoning code. I'm not a developer, I'm a computer person, I run IT companies. I essentially am looking to say, residents, what do you want your city to look like? It's very simple, we can amend our zoning code up and down the city. A lot of our zoning code's pretty old, Sunset Beach's got some issues that I know the residents are unhappy with, Beach Engine Corridor is now essentially broken because of having to make some changes. I mean, we got the Sonic through at 1:00 in the morning because we had some slight zoning deviations that needed to get taken care of in order to have a successful project, to bring down those I-beams that have been sitting there at Newman and Beach Boulevard for years. We need to open those plans again, bring residents in to look at what that development looks like, to see what those fenced-off dirt lots can become in order to generate sales tax for our city. We need a concert venue in town. The number of people I talk to that say we need a Golden Bear in town, it doesn't need to be downtown, but we need a concert venue, a permanent concert venue somewhere to hopefully limit some of those concerts on the state beaches that have such a quality of life impact. And quality of life is really what I'm about. You know, we have traffic in the city, getting across Beach Boulevard, getting onto Beach Boulevard's difficult, Caltrans manages it. How do we make traffic better in the city? With smart city technology. If we can get fiber in the ground, fiber optic cable in the ground, through a joint trench policy, which I helped push through in the city, which still hasn't gotten through council yet, hopefully soon, we can synchronize our traffic signals. We have some of them synchronized, not all of them. As we grow this system out, the traffic system can learn as traffic flows around the city. Say a doctor's office lets 30 people out at 2:00, well, maybe we need to leave that light a little bit greener. Those types of things are basic quality of life issues that can be solved. Smart city technology also can help produce Wi-Fi in our parks and beaches, can help with public safety, can help clear intersections more quickly, and potentially compete on the open market with Spectrum and Frontier, who is everyone's favorite company, to be able to create competitive, open network for our citizens so that we can actually bring down the cost of internet. Additionally, transparency, I have an eight-point plan on my website to talk about transparency. We need to create local ombudspeople in order to get the community the information they need, because the number of meetings that I come to where people just don't have the information they need. And we can make our government more transparent with that. Thank you, my website is dankalmick.com. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So wow, you guys are pretty lucky to have such a great group of candidates to pick from. Pretty lucky, but then some pretty difficult decisions coming up for the citizens of Huntington Beach. But I'd like to thank the candidates, please give them a round of applause. It really takes a lot to put yourselves out there like that, so we appreciate it. The candidates will stick around for a little while, I think, to talk to everybody and answer additional questions. And I'd like to thank the Waterfront Hotel Hilton property for letting us host the event And definitely the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce for putting this all together.